If everyone could take their seats please. The Chair would like to call to order tonight's regular meeting of the CUSD 201 Board of Education, August 13, 2019. And roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Ms. Charlton.
Here.
Ms. Coyle.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mr. Rudy.
Here.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Here.
Ms. Wilson. Thank you.
We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item of business is a closed session. The Chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call please.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Ms. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson. Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Ms. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Ms. Charlton.
Yes.
Thank you.[120.12][120.12](end of transcript)
I did it in there.
That we are...
Coming out of closed.
Came out of closed, but now we're going to leave.
And I'll do that.
Yeah. Oh, here's Kim.
Are we...
Yep, you're ready.
So we have, we have, it is 6:43, we have come out of our, that closed session. And now the chair will entertain a motion to enter a closed session to discuss collective bargaining, personnel issues, and the superintendent's evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
Ann, roll call please.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Stromeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then we will resume the open session of the, of the meeting as soon as we are finished. And then...
Can worms.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, the board is back from closed session and we will now begin open session of meeting. The next topic would be approval of minutes. Does anybody have any questions or anything on any of those? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 16, 2019 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, any... Then, then Joel abstained. And Laura, do you want to abstain?
I abstain.
Hmm?
Abstain.
Okay. Okay, then motion carry. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the July 16, 2019 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, are there any public comments? Okay, the next item is consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions before we do that one? The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Employment of licensed staff. .5 FTE, industrial arts teacher, Westmont Junior High School. Laura Tarnow, 1.0 FTE, second grade teacher at Miller Elementary School. Kelly Brittick, 1.0 FTE, special education teacher, Miller Elementary School. Mary Beth Fagan, 1.0 FTE, social worker, Miller Elementary School. Jennifer Gilbert, long-term substitute, third grade teacher, Manning Elementary School. Employment of support staff. Joseph Smith, 1.0, Director of Facilities District-wide. Catherine Nystrom, 1.0, Baker Food Service Department, Westmont High School. Stipend positions. Megan Crawford, 1.0, Flag Teams Coach, Westmont High School. Joshua Torrens, 1.0, Senior High Varsity Assistant Football Coach, Westmont High School. Joe Kraft, 1.0, Senior Vers- Senior High Varsity Assistant Football Coach, Westmont High School. Joel Sandoval, 1.0, Senior High Boys Frosh Soft Soccer Coach, Westmont High School. Number two, disposal of equipment at Miller. Three, disposal of Chromebooks District-wide. Four, certification of hazardous crossing. Five, board authorization of vehicle use. Six, approval of additional July 2019 expenditure report. And seven, approval of August 2019 expenditure report.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Strohmeyer.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yeah.
Mr. Armstrong.
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are going to-
Marie, Marie.
Yes.
It would it be okay if we flipped, just because I know I have to leave a little early today, can we cover the topic of e-learning days first in the next section?
Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay, then yes, we will do that one first. So e-learning days. Kevin?
And there's recently been legislation that's been passed that allows some flexibility for school districts. If you remember, well, there were three school districts that were allowed to pilot, and then the legislation related to the school day sunset, and nobody really caught that. And so all of a sudden, last school year, there were some school districts taking advantage of that and implementing e-learning. But they've kind of closed that loophole, but they did pass legislation that for emergency days, typically what we refer to as snow days, school districts do have the option that instead of canceling the school day and making it up at the end of the year, that they can have e-learning. And so essentially what occurs is the teachers would create learning activities that would be available to the students. The students then would complete those at home. The teachers would be available for via email, Google Classroom, various other technology to interact with students who had questions during a lot amount of time. Students who receive accommodations for IAP 504, their case managers would individualize bad instruction for them. And then there would be a time limit where students would have to have the work completed, and that's essentially how attendance would be taken, is by student completion of the work. In the event that a student could not access the material remotely, then it would be treated, could be treated as an absence. The parent would call in the school to report that their child is not able to complete the work. And then per our student handbook for absent work, they would have the allotted amount of time to make that up. If there is a process the district has to go through, and I just kind of give the board an idea of what steps would be taken if the board wanted to pursue this. And so essentially, we would want to do an assessment of our families to see internet connectivity, what percent of our families have that at home, and then creating options for those families who do not have that ability. And then the district would have to have a hearing that they would notify the community that they would be having a hearing related to e-learning, similar to how we conduct our budget hearing, in which there's an opportunity for a public comment, board comments, and there would be a presentation. And then the board would have to pass a resolution, and then the teachers would begin preparing units for e-learning. And then 30 days prior to ever having an e-learning day, so at least 30 days.
The bargaining unit.
Oh yeah, and working with various bargaining units. We have already had conversations with WTA last spring when it was the possibility, talking to the WTA. We're currently negotiating with two of our bargaining units, and so that's part of the conversation in case we want to pursue it. And then the 30 days before a school could have an e-learning day, that all the information would have to be shared with parents, the procedures, the protocols. And then if in the event that we ever had an e-learning day, then I would follow up with the board with a report at the next board meeting about the attendance, how everything went, and if any tweaks would need to be made. And then I also included in my memo to the board that, you know, another option that the board had discussed as a possibility of rather than e-learning days, another option that some school districts do is some of the holidays that are built into the calendar. Some of those days, when we use an emergency day, some of those days then are changed to an attendance day. Again, with notification to parents, letting them know that this is how things would work. That process, we don't have to go through a hearing, you know, we can move forward with that without going through the hearing process.
Okay, so I don't see the major driver for this. It's just not adding an extra day to the end of the year like we've traditionally done. So we have kind of a set schedule. But I just, I don't see, first off, I don't see for IAP students how those minutes are really going to be made up, which I have an issue with. I mean, you're talking about having kind of some preset curriculum that's set in case you have one of these days, which will be, I can't see how it's going to be relevant or timely to what they're doing on Tuesday. If they have a snow day on Wednesday, or they're not continuing on with the lesson that they learned on Tuesday most likely, they're doing some sort of other activity, others, you know, learning activity, and then they're returning to, you know, to be continued the next regular school day. So to me, it just, I don't know what the big driver is for this, but if it's just to not add a day at the end of the year, I don't think it's really something that I'm going to support. I don't see a benefit here.
Does it save money, when we add days to the end of the school year, does that cost the district additional money as far as salaries go? One of the attachments that you had was from Minnesota, I believe, talking about, Department of Education, talking about, and I agree with some of Joel's concerns. One of the things that was interesting to me though was, it says, what are some examples of quality e-learning? And it's talking more about real-time instruction. So it includes active instruction by teachers, include an option for a class to meet via video chat such as Google Hangout. So you're having almost like a lecture, kind of like a college online course. So I think, I think, I don't know what it would look like for our district, and I think that really changes how I feel about it. If it's just busy work and filling in a multiplication handout versus continuing instruction. Although I will say that days at the end of the year kind of feel like filler days sometimes with breaking instruction as well, especially for adding days at the very end of the year, and you've already done finals. I don't know how much instruction is actually occurring on those, on those days as well. But I think what, what we would do as a district really, I'm curious about.
I just have to answer one, one question. One of, that was one of the reasons why Kevin brought up that second part, because what we had talked about last year was, what can we do? So if we, if we instituted, like, using those days in January and February, then we wouldn't be tacking them on at the end of the year. So just so, I know you weren't here when we were doing those conversations, but that's where that second piece came from.
That second option?
Yes.
Other than an e-learning day to change some of the non-attendance days?
Yes, that's where that came from. So I have a couple of questions on this, and it does go a little bit to what, actually what both of them said. So I have a couple of questions that are like, the whole idea of, of what it would look like. I think for me, is, is there someone in the district that is really looking into this, that could do a presentation for the board and the district and so-and-so? Because in your, in your memo, you refer to these websites or whatever. But my, one of my biggest concerns is that I can see from like a high school perspective that you could, you know, go into a video chat and do something like college. But we have like first graders. And to me, that seems like that work would fall to the parents. I can't imagine a first grader working for five hours on something. So for me, I would like to see how that would impact, since we're a unit district, how that would impact everybody. I would, I would really like to see somebody give us, like, you, thank you, you gave us some pieces here, but what would it look like for us? How would that work, and what are the benefits? And, you know, you had talked about teachers will create various learning activities. So anecdotally, I was at a restaurant over the summer, and there were, I heard a bunch of teachers talking, and they started saying things like, well, will it just be a packet that you hand out at the beginning of the year, and then they just do busy work? So I thought it was interesting just because how could, I guess I would like to see, how could you make it so that it does follow what they're currently doing? And the, okay, so then the other question I had was, it said in terms of possible hotspots for people that don't have Internet. So would that be that they would have to go somewhere?
It can be-
A hotspot?
Right, it can be accomplished a couple ways. There are some districts that give a list to families of places that they can go for free Wi-Fi. There's other districts that actually purchase hotspots that the family then can sign out. So you can do it, you know, one of two ways.
So from that regard, I think it would be helpful for us to know before we even talked about that, because if what we're telling a family on a snow day or a cold day that they have to go someplace, then we've, that's-
Right.
Counterproductive. Then I would be, I would like to hear what the bargaining units talk about in terms of that. But I guess what I'm, what I'm looking at is, it doesn't, I, I'm not an educator. I can't envision how a plan would come forward, especially if we're, is this, is the thought of this to do at this school year?
That, that would, that's one possibility that we would do for this school year.
So my knee-jerk right now would be to just go with the second option until we know more specifics. That's just where I'm coming from, because I think there's so many questions about what it looks like to a family, and especially from the younger and, and students with IEP. So that's my-
I have some, I have serious concerns about the students with IEPs, because there is, I just can't imagine a manner in which things like physical therapy and speech therapy and these very interactive therapies that are, that a certain IEP may need, even, you know, the support of a reading specialist that really is a shoulder-to-shoulder activity in a lot of cases for these kids, it's, I just don't see how that can ever be made up or how that five hours is going to be filled without it. Because a lot of, there are students that their five, their five hours are predominantly those things. And, and of course, I share the same concern that Marie has with younger students, kindergartners, first graders, second graders, third graders. Having been in a kindergarten classroom just to visit, you know that the whole structure of the, the experience is structured around doses of learning with doses of, of time to not learn or to, you know, structured play, because that's part of the learning process. A lot of kindergarten and the younger years are about socialization skills and those kind of things, and they're sitting in front of an iPad while many kids do that, mine does, doesn't create those types of environments for them either. So I, I, I love the idea of it in a high school level, junior high level, but we are a unit district.
Right.
So I would be far more in favor of the second option, if any, to be honest. I don't, I don't personally have a problem with days at the end of the year being added on for inclement weather. This is where we live. And, and the other question I too have, Kevin, that I would love to get feedback on, if it's even possible. This past year was a extraordinarily cold snowy winter.
Right.
And we had, what did we, how many?
Four.
Four emergency days. It seemed like, it felt like to me that was the anomaly, not the rule. I would, I would guess anecdotally, without data, that we probably are averaging one and a half to two, if we look over the course of 15 years, which is a really good kind of, of weather type of window. I think this is, this might be more of a reaction to a couple of tougher years, because I know there are years where there are zero.
Right. I think the quality of instruction is just going to suffer on those days. I mean, we spend an awful lot of time here and have over the years talking about contact hours and how important it is, and the kids do too much testing, and they're out of the classroom for all this testing, and, you know, they should be in the classroom with, with, with their teachers. And so it just doesn't make sense to me that this is going to be beneficial to our students.
Well, I'm not a big fan of tacking the days on at the end of the school year. I know that nothing gets done on those days. I agree with Mrs. Strohmeyer. You get to the end of the school year, and okay, we got to tack four days on, so the kids are doing absolutely nothing. So I'm not sure when instructional learning is going on on those days either. I'm also in favor of keeping it real time, meaning I would be more in favor of the second option of trying not to, to waste some days that were normally supposed to be scheduled off, because that's going to be more in real time probably, you know, it's President's Day, it's a couple other days. It might be a week off or two weeks off the lesson you were learning, but it's not like you just skip right over it here at the end of the school year, and you tack down four days, and the kids do nothing. I know this. I've been here for many years now, that nothing goes on on those days. There is, there is no instructional real learning going on when we tack on the four days at the end of the year. So I also know that tacking on the days at the end of the year is more disruptive to the families. Many people, I don't know why, but many people schedule their vacation for the very next day school gets out. Okay? I can't tell you over the years how many people have been upset that we added on that day at the end of the year. No, I'm leaving for a blank. Well, okay, I'm sorry, you know, you should know where you live and that type of thing. That's a different rabbit hole. But that's why being able to, you know, say, this is the first day of school, this is going to be the last day of school, and if we have to mix in, take one of these days off in the middle here and make it a school day, I just think that's a better plan. I think that keeps, you know, everybody with IEPs and all the students in the classroom where we really want them as close to real time as possible.
Two other things that just dawned on me. So if we, if what we're trying to do, like, like following up on those families without Internet activity, we'll provide, it just, it kind of, it also reminded me that like, if all of a sudden there's a snow day for the students. There's many parents that they can't take a snow day. So maybe it's, you know, grabbing grandma for the day, or can you go to someone else's house? So now, if we had done something, now we've put another requirement on a family that is impacted by a snow day. Because we all know, anyone who's been on the board a long time, the first couple of snow days, parents are like, you better call a snow day or else. But then when you get to the third and fourth, it's like, you better not have a snow day or else. So because it's so disruptive to a family, so I think we're also asking more of our families in addition to possibly leaving the house to do the work. And, well, two other things. So this, this document that you gave us with the Public Act 101, it specifically says, "In lieu of emergency days and maintains flexibility for students to engage in career-connected learning outside of the classroom." Well, that is clearly directed at older students than, you know, the younger students. And I also noticed that, I know some of this stuff came out, like, so if we, if there is a, what is this, Minnesota State Department. So, okay, so they are upper, so their concerns might be more, or South Carolina. I know my sister lives in North Carolina, and, you know, there's one flake down there and everything shuts down. So there might be other districts that are dealing with more than two or three days. They might be having 10 days to deal with. I know that since I've been on the board, there's been like, probably an average of two, maybe one. So I think that- So I think that is why I would, without having an intense knowledge of what they would look like, would be to use the days, um, like President's Day. So, and then if we did something like that, you'd tell the families like right out of the box. So that people know that's not.
Right.
Yeah, we're taking a snow day today, but it'll be made up February 12th.
It could be.
Right.
Yes.
We'd, we'd let them know at the beginning of the year that these possible days would be used for.
Right. And especially for, I don't know, I'm just trying to think offhand, like college, kids going to college visits or whatever. Although in February, you're probably not doing that. But it's just thinking about the impact to the families of these things that so far I, I haven't seen an overwhelming case that it's beneficial other than that tacking at the end of the school year, so.
Yeah, I guess I was gonna ask Kevin, are there benefits to the e-learning that we might be overlooking? And have you and staff of these options that you presented, have you and staff sort of come together on a recommendation? Or do you, do you think you're gonna come forward with a recommendation? Or are you just at this point looking for us to weigh in on our thoughts sort of raw without, without that information?
Right. And we've had, um, when a lot of the, uh, because when the, um, the, the original legislation sunset and all of a sudden, you know, the school day was no longer defined and it was gonna possibly give a lot of flexibilities to schools on how they could, you know, you could start use, looking at, for instance, internships and students doing an internship counts as a school day, you know? So there are, um, there are a lot of conversations and also the emergency days was part of the conversation. We started, uh, we have our district leadership team, which is made up of teachers, admin. We started up conversations about, you know, is this something that we would like to look at as a district in terms of e-learning and, and kind of what that would look like? And some of the same conversations we're having tonight, you know, in terms of it, it is much easier to visualize with older students. So the question was, at the elementary level, do we think we can make this work? And the teachers said yes, they, they felt that they could, could make it work. And, um, then it was kind of, then all of a sudden, the conversations in Springfield changed and they were gonna reverse everything. And then there was, uh, at one time, the possibility that e-learning wasn't even gonna be on the table. And so then it kind of, those conversations been going further. And then, uh, during the, uh, I can't remember, it was right at the end of school year, summer, they passed the legislation and then all of a sudden, e-learning was a possibility, you know? So that, you know, again, we could kind of start resuming those conversations. I think in terms of, I, I think, you know, teachers are okay with either option. One of the concerns was when you start taking a look at like three day weekends and so forth, that's another time that some families plan to go out of town. And so, you know, you're gonna.
You'll have absent.
Right. You'll have some, some absences and then some unhappy families.
Well, hence the giving everybody knowledge
Right.
at the beginning of the year, that that's a possibility.
Right.
And then families decide for themselves. It just, it's, it's interesting that you just brought that up because I'm reading this Public Act again, 101. And so it, it talks about, um, a number of things, like contains exemptions for dual credit and participation in supervised career development, like what you're talking about, and participating in youth apprenticeships. And, and it also allows districts to do e-learning. So the Public Act incorporates a number of things.
Right.
So it's, it wasn't, it's, am I correct on that? So it's not just about e-learning?
Right, right.
So, um, and all those other things are pretty cool if you're an older student who wants to do that, so.
Yes, for the record, I wanna say I'm open to the e-learning option, but I think I, and it sounds like the rest of the board would need to hear how you would address some of the concerns that have been brought up.
Right. And that's, that's I guess my question for the board. Is it worth, you know, having a presentation done for the board about what this would look like? You know, at various grade levels? Or is the board kind of like, well, you know, we're more comfortable with option two, utilizing some of the holidays versus pursuing, you know?
Unfortunately, there's probably not a way to, to pilot one or the other. It's kind of an all we're in or we're out on this. And so I, I just, I, I guess my concern, I, I, I don't want someone to waste a bunch of time coming up with a presentation for the board. But if there is a strong enough support between administrators and teachers that e-learning can work and they want it, they want to go that route. So it sounds to me, from what you just said Kevin, that it was kind of kicked around for a while and then it was let go because it didn't look like it was gonna happen. And then suddenly it, it was okay and now, um, but it was too late to really dive into it.
Right.
So I think if nothing else for this upcoming school year, I don't think, I, I don't see how the preparation could be made. But I also, again, don't wanna, unless there's a significant support from the educational staff and administrators to say, this is something we wanna pursue and this is how we can pursue it, then I, I just don't want someone to waste the time. Personally.
Yeah, I had that same question because if we had to do a budget hearing, like in September, that sounds to me like that would need to be a full, like, like breadth of presentation, right? Because if you're gonna have parents coming and asking questions similar to what we're just asking here, it sounds like that's, would be a lot of work.
Hot spots and, you know.
Well, all, all that.
There's, there's a lot of provision
Right.
involved in this that goes beyond what is currently in the budget and what is, you know, currently accounted for.
Well, that's, so I guess that's the piece, do we wanna talk about looking at it throughout this school year? To see if it works and see if there's a, a real benefit to it before trying to rush something for approval in September?
Well, I'd, I'd like to see us make a decision about, you know, making up those school days and how we're gonna do it.
Okay. My next question was, or do we wanna just for this year, go with option two and then explore?
Could be my suggestion. Why don't we, why don't we go with option two so we can put a plan into place? And then we can get some more information about the e-learning.
Exactly.
I, I would be very concerned about.
That was exactly where I was going because it seems like.
Again, though, this is a discussion item. We don't have to make a decision tonight.
I, I would like.
Well, well, we, I think what we might wanna do is, since school starts next week, have something that says, okay, let me, let me back up. Do we, is this a vote, is this a something that we have to vote on the calendar?
No.
We've already voted on the calendar.
What will happen is that
But we could.
In the, in the event that, you know, we have a, we have a board approved calendar. We have the ROE approved our calendar. What happens if you go with option two is, um, in the event that we have an emergency day, then I do an amended calendar that gets sent to the ROE and the ROE approves the amended calendar.
Except what we would need to, I guess my question is more like, school year starts Wednesday. We don't have an opportunity to vote on it. Is this something we have to vote on in terms of, do we, if, when we're finished with this conversation, if it looks like this year we wanna go with option two, we wanna explore option one, can we do that and tell our families this is what the plan is? That's, I guess that's the logistical question that I don't know about. Do we have to vote on it? And, because we're not done discussing, so, because I like that idea a lot. And if we're gonna do it, I think we should tell our families as soon as possible to the beginning of the school year. So Dana, you were gonna?
Um, I, for the second option, which it sounds a little more feasible, the direction that we're talking about going for this year, I guess I'm concerned with what I don't know about how that affects our families and our staff. So I would, I don't know if there's a way we could survey our, our families or, or our staff to see if there's unintended consequences with taking, for example, President's Day away and making that.
Well, I can tell you that for several years now, many families have complained to us why we're not doing this.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's.
Okay. That, that comes up all the time in the group discussions. Why aren't we doing this? This district does that, why can't we?
Okay.
Okay?
That's more about the feedback.
Uh, that's, I can.
And that's really what's, what's, what's driving my opinion because I have heard that opinion. Every time we do it, every time we do it, somebody says, why aren't we doing this? Okay? Again, it's not the majority of people I'm hearing from, I'm just hearing from the people who want to voice their opinion.
And one of the other unintended consequences, what you're saying, I agree with, is if all we do, I mean, this is something. At least we can try it for one year. If all we do is like tack it at the end of the school year, we are, we all know that that's not.
That's not the best plan either.
The best educational.
That's also disruptive to families also.
It's also, so I, so that's, so my piece was, you know, if we want to learn more about e-learning, why don't we use it as like this year? If, if you're telling us that the administration and the teachers really wanna do it, let's use this as a discussion during the school year. You know what's gonna happen now, right? Since we made this decision, it's not gonna be a bad winter, but, no, I mean, we haven't made decisions. We haven't made decisions, but I guess there's, just from this group right here, where we have so many questions, do we wanna do that?
To be fair, anytime we have a disruptive day in the calendar that's published, we're going to have consequences for families, whether good or bad. And so to be fair, it makes no difference whether we take away President's Day or we add a day at the end of the year.
Correct.
It, it, I mean, of course, it makes a difference to Mr. and Mrs. Smith. But Mr. and Mrs. Jones feel very strongly about the other way. So if we wanna make this, if we wanna, you know, attack this policy in whatever way we attack it, we're going, we still have the issue of, we have a published calendar. People live their lives based on that, they, they plan their lives based on that calendar. And when weather happens, weather happens and we can't do anything about that other than make up that time.
But, but again, if, I mean, one of the things that we've talked about here is quality, the quality of the education. So if we, if we adopted putting, you know, if something happens in January, then we put President's Day in. You then are adding a day that is during the school year as opposed to adding a day at the end, which is what I think.
We're also taking a, a third, a, a, a third day of a, of a three day weekend that parents, that maybe it's the only time you can get away for that time. So again, it's, to be fair, it goes, it cuts both ways. And, and if, if we're talking about using a day in February to make up a day in January, there's a pretty good day, there's a pretty, pretty good chance we could be down two days as of that day in February.
Well, you're right, but those are the only days.
Two other days.
But those are the only days.
I understand.
We can only look at those days.
Right. Well, I understand.
And when we talked about this before, a few years ago, there was some talk about, well, do we talk about spring break? And everybody was the same way, no, I don't think we can touch spring break. That would be, that would be, yes.
But there are SIP days that we could also.
That's why it's, it's more, it's more, I think, palatable to the majority such as it is, not these individual, that you say we are, our, our concern is quality education and if we have to do something, we'll make it up. So, you know. I mean, I know, uh, North Carolina started, no, no, school on Saturdays. Now, that's a whole other conversation, but to me, that seems more, I mean, more palatable than in June when we know. So I, that's just, that's my, so does, what do you?
Just one thing that, that we do need to be aware of is we do have twelve month employees, that those are holidays for them. So we would have to figure out and give them floating holidays or something else so that they get those days off somewhere else during the year if they have to be there. Otherwise, you would have to pay them.
Isn't the snow day, would just, wouldn't they would just be considered a holiday?
They work, no, because they work those days anyway.
Most cases, twelve month employees still report.
How many of those do we have? How many twelve month?
Your admin, your district office, support staff, custodial, maintenance, couple of principal secretaries, tech, all these administrators.
Most of those people are not actual teachers in the classroom, right?
Right.
Right.
Well, then they have to come to work.
Well, an additional floating holiday, I don't, that, is that hard to administer or?
It's a challenge too.
Yes, it's a challenge to all the calendars in the system. Yes, yes. And then the other thing is, I'll have to have a conversation with our transportation providers and see how much notice they need because, um, you know, we've given them a calendar of here's the days we're not transporting kids. You know, they know at the end of the year, that's an expectation that they have to add on. But again, some of those other holidays, you know, how we work that out and what kind of notification they need as well.
There are other local districts
Yeah.
doing this?
Yes.
There, there are some, yes. Um, I know Marker did it last year.
Well, Marker has their own buses.
Yeah.
Oh, true.
But that is.
My question is, is, you know, are there other, other districts that are using our same busing provider that do this? Question worth asking.
What precipitated us wanting to make a change?
I think it, I think it was kind of what was expressed here. Especially last year with having four days and maybe it is reactive. The conversation was, hey, can't we do something different instead of adding days onto the end of the school year? So, you know, there was some conversations about, you know, again, some districts have been utilizing holidays to make up those days. The e-learning, because that all of a sudden became a lot of conversations about e-learning. Hey, can we look at e-learning so that we can avoid adding days on? So I, that's what kind of drove it. I think it was more the most recent winter using four days.
I, I would be interested in a kind of hybrid approach where we select two holidays within the school year that we isolate ahead of time to say, these are the two holidays we may use to make up days if necessary. If we go beyond those two, we're gonna have to add days. Because if that's the, if our average over the course of the last X number of years is two days, then we can, we can absorb two days within the calendar. I don't know, I don't know if there's four days to absorb within the calendar.
Well, that is a very good.
It all depends on when the days hit.
Exactly. They all happen in November and December, like.
We, we have more options than if it happens in March, you know, which you can get us a day in March, you know?
We're more likely to have a white Easter than a white Christmas, let's be honest.
I gotta be honest, the more we talk, the more I'm status, I have my, my position is, we just stay the way we are for next year and, and investigate e-learning and compare, really compare these two options during the course of this year and figure out, you know, what it would take from an administrative standpoint if we went with the President's Day option and what it would take district wide to really do e-learning well and is that? And then we can do a full comparison during this year and not make any changes this coming school year.
What if we did this? Okay, because I like that thought too. What if we did a hybrid approach for this year? And at the next meeting, which is August 27th, so it's still at the beginning of the school year, if we can get some facts, like what are the dates? Like, let's have us look at what the dates are and we could say, these two would be potentially there. And Kim, if you could do a preliminary, like how would that look from an administrative pers- percent, uh, that aspect of that piece? Just, and then if we want to do something, we could do just something. Because I'll, I will tell you that, what Gary was saying is right. Every time that something happens, there is, you know, texts and phone calls and, and, and stuff. And again, ten years of this, that it has come out that it's been enough. I mean, to the point where we've actually had conversations that we have a protocol that if any days are added, we don't change the ju- the senior high, but we do change the junior high. So these, these kind of conversations have come up a number of times for a number of reasons. And I think the other thing that has come up is that every time we do tack it at the end of the year, are, I don't know, are we utilizing, are we giving our students? So there's a number of things that came up. I think just last year was like, that was an extreme. But it's, 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 it's come up so many times for so many different ways.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I just don't know if we're gonna avoid that, no matter what approach we take.
Well, if we don't do anything, we're gonna hear it too. So, you know what I mean? That was what.
I'd be in favor of investigating the two days. And then if it's more than two, tack it on to the end of the year. I'd be in favor of that. At least, at least having a plan, having something better than just keep doing it the way we've been doing it.
Okay, so Gary, you would, what, John?
I'm fine with a hybrid plan.
Look at a hybrid plan, would you want, at, at the next meeting?
I mean, I'm okay exploring it. I, I kinda think we're putting a lot of work and effort into a couple of days of the school year that, um, we're gonna have some problems with it either way, but yes, let's go ahead and look at it.
Okay. Dana?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm gonna go out on a limb and say Joel probably would since, from his conversation. But it sounds like also, if you, it sounds like from what we're talking about, if, if, can we, so for the next board meeting, we will look at what it would look like. And if we decide to do something, we could let our families know right away. But can we also look into, can you talk to the administrators and, and teachers? And maybe somebody without going above and beyond the call of duty, do a presentation of what e-learning would look like in our district considering?
Yeah, but not at the next meeting.
No, 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 no. I said, no, that was the point about.
Right. At some. Right, at some point, we know.
Not making it through the school year. Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, that was the whole, putting that to, um.
And in particular, I would say the younger grades. What does it really look like to a kindergarten, a third grader, or first grader? I, I, I mean.
I think we can all see it as, as a high schooler, right? We can all visualize.
Yeah, no problem as a high school, even, even a seventh and eighth grader, okay? I mean, I, it'd be real easy to, to, to see that happening.
Well, and, and.
That might be a lot of those other districts that we're talking about.
And the other, and the other pieces to not only what it looks like, but these logistics.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right.
Yeah.
I guess to slow down the process of that, but to look at it over the course of the school year. Does that, does that sound?
Yep.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Sure.
All right, so, we'll look at some form of something for next week. Okay. Okay, um, now we will go for, to discussion, enrollment, projections.
So we have our, uh, enrollments, where, where we projected to be, uh, for the opening of our school year. And this, just so you know, this is, uh, fluid at this time, because I gave you in the, uh, board docs, um, registration. Uh, we were at eighty-seven percent. So, since registration, building secretaries have been contacting families that have not gone through registration, kind of see what their intent is. In some cases, you know, they may have been out of town, but they intend on returning. In other cases, they've actually moved, but they haven't notified anybody. So, we kind of, uh, find that out. And so then, um, in your black folders this evening, I was able to get, uh, what we know today, our enrollments for each of our buildings. The interesting thing, um, is that, uh, in terms of students who are new to our district, Manning and Miller have added fifteen new students to the, that are new to our district.
Can I back up, are those kindergarten?
No.
Okay, that's.
This is excluding kindergarten.
This is excluding, okay, good, good, good.
Excluding kindergarten, these are grades other than kindergarten. The junior high, we've got fourteen new students to the district. The high school, nineteen, that means, um, those are some freshmen, but not freshmen who we knew about from our eighth grade. So we have nineteen new students.
That's, I, that's why I asked Kevin for this, because I, at the registration, there kept being more and more families. There was a family that came from Texas, three students, and so I thought that was really interesting to see. Okay, good, thank you.
And then in terms of, and I show you what the enrollment was in June, when we closed our doors for each of the grade levels in each of the buildings. And then, again, today, if we were to open our doors today, what the enrollment would be in each of the grade levels. And then, uh, just so you know, like, the, um, change from June, kindergarten, it's, last year's kindergarten, and this year's kindergarten. But the other grades, it's, uh, you know, in June, we had sixty kindergarten students at Manning. In first grade, we have sixty. So the comparison is to where they were at the lower grade, where that same, same group is. So that, one, it's a change of two students. We had forty-seven first graders, we're at now at, uh, forty-nine second graders. And we had fifty-five second graders, we had fifty-six, uh, third graders. And so that's each of those. So you can see where, um, and then Miller, you've got, uh, last year, we had quite a large group for Miller for kindergarten.
Before you leave Manning, so, just to have the conversation, so, if we opened our doors tonight, we are still in our, um, class size.
Guidelines.
Guidelines.
We're still within.
We're still at the class size guidelines, okay.
And then, uh, at, uh, Miller, the one question I know, uh, is always dual language. Um, we had, uh, originally six on the waiting list. Um, after we go through registration, we see if we have any more native Spanish speakers. Um, and then, uh, we were able to add one more student to dual language. So, there are five students that did not get into dual language, but we have twenty-two in dual language.
And that's kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
Right, just kindergarten. Because if you, if you start and you go through.
Right.
Okay.
And if you have a sibling that's already in the program, then those students are enrolled in kindergarten.
Is that, is that, um, the five students that did not get into the program, is that pretty consistent for the last few years?
Uh, that's lower than, I think last year, we had a.
More than that, more than five.
Right. Right.
Um, really, I don't know if there's any more questions about the dual language, but related to Miller, I think it would be interesting for us to, um, not look at Miller in terms of average class size.
But break it out.
At, yeah, but break it out, because the, as you get into the older grades, um, the dual language class sizes essentially stay the same. Um, because they're typically not adding kids to those.
Right.
So as there's, as there's increased, and you know this, I'm just saying it for, as there's increased enrollment in like a grade four, um, that could increase the monolingual class size significantly. So it would help us monitor whether we're staying within the guidelines for those.
I can, I can break that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I can break that down.
As long as you, I mean, are we still within our guidelines?
Yes, we are.
For Miller, even with that?
Mm-hmm, yep, we are.
And that, that, that's an interesting piece to the whole thing.
Yeah.
Because we, as a district, made a decision, or it was suggested, that once you start, you don't add.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So there will always.
The number is pretty consistent in those classes.
Right. In that, in those classes.
So when the enrollment increases, it increases in the monolingual.
In the mon- right, yes. And so that, that's an interesting, but.
So average is not really the right way to look at it. Because it's, we can't spread it across two classrooms like we can in the others.
But the, but the other side of that is that that will always be, like, you know, if you start in kindergarten and then you move.
Right.
Or someone comes in in third grade, they can't start in third grade.
So really, you just wanted to say, um, dual language class size.
Monolingual class.
Monolingual class size, yeah, yep. Just split them apart, so that we can make sure we're staying within the guidelines.
And then, uh, junior high, um, we're up in enrollment over when we close our doors, and that's, uh, if you look, we picked up, uh, five additional students. Um, in seventh grade, we had eighty-nine, sixth graders, we have ninety-four, um, seventh graders. And then we also, uh, picked up a couple of, uh, fifth graders, um, so that the number went up. There were, uh, eighty-four fifth graders last year, so we're at eighty-seven sixth graders. Same thing at the high school, if you look, um, we had, uh, eighty-two eighth graders last year, and we're up to eighty-nine ninth graders. So we picked up some, some families either.
Yeah.
Were in our private school for eighth grade, or moved into the district, uh, over the summer.
Yeah, that, I'm, thank you for that, because I didn't, I thought it was just my imagination, but that line, that line was really long for new kid, high school kids. Okay, so, but right now, we're on track.
Right.
To maintain where we are. Nothing is so outs, there hasn't been some bump somewhere.
Right.
Changes.
Right.
Okay. That's good to let everybody know that, okay.
If the, the board agrees with this, I would maybe like to see in Kevin's board update this week, that breakdown of the Miller class.
Sure.
Just.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good.
That's a, yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, and, but from what you know right now, you can kind of, you can, you're saying we're still within the guidelines? Even though we want the information?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good, that's, yeah, thank you. And then, um, one of the things Kevin and I were talking about is, um, we always get the day six numbers. And we won't have that for our August twenty-seventh meeting, because that won't be six days.
Six days of attendance.
Mm-hmm, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because it's, so I.
Whatever the state asks for the six-day enrollment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any way, do we want to contemplate having our own internal five-day numbers?
I can, I can give you the.
At the next board meeting?
Sure, I mean, it's not.
Because I asked about that, I did not know that.
Be sure we don't need to add a section, that's all.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Right, exactly, we would want to move on that right away.
Exactly, that's why we're, yeah. I didn't know that was a state thing, so.
Yeah, it's the state.
Thank you.
It's the state.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right, then we will move to summer facility projects update.
We've been busy, um, over the summer, um, at the high school. Um, the ADA compliant locker installation in the boys and girls locker rooms should be complete by August sixteen. As well as the ADA compliant lab station installation in some of the sci- uh, science rooms. And then the gym floor has been screened and restriped. And at the junior high, the carpet replacement in rooms three twelve, three thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, that's been completed. Um, at Manning, the lunch tables have been ordered, they were supposed to be here August nineteenth, but, um, they're running about two weeks behind. So hopefully, we'll see them in early September. And then the gym door replacement, I'm still waiting for an update from the vendor on when we'll see that door. Um, at Miller, um, the new asphalt was laid for the walking path, and then they're still doing a few, um, things to update, uh, the area back there. South, we did not have any projects, um, for the summer. Um, the tuck pointing will wait, um, until after our new facilities director comes on board. And then district-wide, um, the tech department has been really busy with, um, the phone system replacement and working diligently to get that. Um, they're end of things done, um, all the phones have been placed, um, in the schools and in the rooms. So everyone's gonna have two phones on their desks for a while. Um, the programming's been completed, but we're, um, having some issues with AT&T and Comcast in getting things switched over. And that's not happening as timely as it should be, so it's gonna be probably another four week, four to six weeks before our Dets finalized. So, it, it's both, so, i- it's both, so, anyway. Um, but, um, in addition to that, the custo.
Before you leave that, can I just ask a question? Uh, because are any phone numbers changing?
Um, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not the, the main numbers. I mean, the teacher may have a different number, depending upon if they move to a new location. But no, everything is staying the same, that's right, that part of the process is porting all the numbers over from one provider to the other.
Okay, so, for instance, you know, on Open House, the teachers give parents, like, if you want to reach me, you can contact me at this and this and this. So they're, that will be just on their own end for that.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. And then, um, in addition to all the projects, the custodians have been busy painting, doing repairs and routine maintenance, um, detail cleaning throughout the buildings. Ground staff has been busy working on maintaining the landscaping and other outside projects. And, um, I just wanna give a shout-out to all the custodians, um, maintenance and the grounds people. They have really, um, been great in helping me make sure that we can continue to run things and get things done. And I've been in daily contact with them and working on, you know, working on the director facilities job also. So, um, but I could not, you know, have done it with all, all their communication and support. So I just wanted to make sure people understand how much they have really, um, you know, pitched in and made sure things happen.
Agreed. Okay, um, any, any other questions or comments on that? Um, then, athletic director position?
Um, the, uh, district and the Board of Education has had a goal of providing additional support, uh, for our athletic and co-curricular programs. To hope, um, you know, with the hope of, uh, developing a comprehensive program and creating a vision for the district. Um, and earlier, there was some discussion about possibly adding a, a full-time administrative position. And it was agreed that the timing just wasn't good with, uh, um, what we were looking at in terms of our budget. And, uh, there's always, you know, pressing needs throughout the district. But working with the, uh, Athletic Director Committee and the Westmont Teachers Association, um, we were able to, to, uh, propose to grow the position. So currently, the way the Athletic Director Position works, the, uh, the Athletic Director is freed, uh, point two of their day, the rest of the day, they're, have other responsibilities. But, um, we're able to increase that to point five, so essentially, they'll be able to spend half of their day on co-curriculars and, um, athletics. And then, um, the other half of the day, they would be involved in other activities. Um, and then with the thinking that the Athletic Director can work with stakeholders, uh, creating that vision for our athletic and co-curricular programs and continue to grow that position. So that, uh, we do get to that full-time position that we envisioned at a, at a future date.
Kevin, I have a question on this. We have a current stipend position of point two. Are we adding point five, or are we total point five? Because at one point, I know we discussed, um, being closer to a, a point seven, point eight.
Right, uh, totals point five. Um, and, you know, that was part of the discussion with the WTA. Um, they actually were, were at one time suggesting we not move forward any changes for this year. But I told them that that really wasn't acceptable, that we needed to do something. And, uh, so, we agreed for this year, point five, again, with the eye to the future of continuing to grow that. Um, and allowing the individual to kind of be part of that process and developing that vision.
And that's any part due to the way stipends are done, right?
Right, right.
What's that mean, sorry?
Yeah, expand on that, please.
The, uh, well, the, well, first of all, stipends fall under the WTA, and so everything is negotiated through the WTA. But, um, you know, the, the person receives the full stipend, but then, in addition to that, they get the release time. And so that's where the point five comes in, is the additional release time.
So the stipend is the dollars.
Right.
Has nothing to do with release time. The release time is part of the stipend, but it's, it's just gonna be point five.
Right.
If.
Unfortunate. I, I, I just, I, I feel it's very unfortunate, because I think that we, as a board, made some significant promises to our district and our parents and our coaches and everybody involved. We were gonna take a hard look at this, and a half FTE is, or point five FTE release time is not a hard look at this. It doesn't, it's not, in my opinion, anyway, and from our experience on the committee, talking with everyone involved and the stakeholders involved in that committee, that this is, this is not even a Band-Aid to the situation, in my opinion.
As we move forward, okay, so I have two questions. One, um, is everyone will notice that, um, right now, on the agenda, there is an, um, an action item that says approval of the Athletic Director Position. We put that there in case we wanted to vote on it tonight. But if we have more questions or anything like that, we can also move that to the next meeting. So logistics, I just wanted to mention that. So as we're talking about this, um, position, the, the, the person in the position, um, where does that, can I ask this? How does this, how does this work with the person that we're talking about? Is that something that works for him?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because part of the, the position is a teaching assistant.
Right, right.
Okay, and that person wants to maintain that teaching assistant for now?
Um, right, I mean, ideally, I think everybody would, you know, you could go full-time AD, I think that's what all parties would, would agree to. But it is possible to adjust this individual's day, so that, um, they can take on the responsibility of the AD's position for the point five. Point five, again, the TA responsibilities, without us having to add additional employees.
So, the, the, the overreaching discussion about this position, um, I had thought that what the plan was, that we were gonna come up with, what do we want it to look like? And then where do we go from there? And do, you know, we, do we need somebody full-time? I think we have, we've had that conversation about all of that. Um, obviously, the, what we talked about before with the plan and the amount of money was, well, we had that conversation. But the other thing was, um, is the plan to have more, to, to continue with the meetings about this?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So can we bring into this, um, additional people, like parents? And maybe even some students, like, that are, you know, because I think what we had before was, well, we had a couple of coaches, and we had, um, uh, a teacher that was in the, uh.
Fine arts.
Our fine arts department, so can we do that?
Sure.
I, I think that was, and I know that that's what I thought we had talked about last year. That's what I, how I thought that it was like, that we were gonna look at, what are we looking at? What are we looking for? And then, so, I, I mean, I really feel bad that it's come to this, because I know this committee met a couple of times about, about this. And then, it was. And then it was present. So that, that's just, that's how I feel about that.
I have a couple of thoughts on the position itself, just to clarify or make sure that we're getting what we want out of the position as it stands. So for the duties of this person, it says to, the number one says to create and monitor a vision for the athletic and student activities program. I would love for this person to be able to give the board an update on, as their, at least once this year, if the board is agreeable to that, on what their vision is for the athletic and student activities programs. Kind of what the strengths of our programs are, the weaknesses and where we're moving next. If the board is agreeable to that. I think for item number 11, that talks about coordinating and providing oversight for developing a district calendar. One thing I've noticed, as I have an incoming freshman at the high school, is some things are currently not on our calendar. Like the parent meeting for Thursday night for fall sports isn't on the high school calendar. It's not on the athletics tab. So I think just making sure that we're, we don't necessarily need to create new things, but using the current structure that we have, that we're doing a great job of communicating to parents and to our potential athletes, that where everything's updated and, and every, in every way, that there's meet schedules and practice schedules for each of the sports, that oversight. I know coaches do most of the communication at the high school, but just making sure that it's all coordinated K through 12, I think would be really wonderful. And then looking at number 21, the last duty, which says to continue to evaluate the existing programs and make suggestions for improving them as well as discontinuing activities that have lost their appeal and promoting new activities in their place. So I think that would be something, because this is a K through 12 focus, I think that that would be really nice to have an update from the board, maybe once or twice a year, on, on where we're at as a district. Because this is, the intent is going to be a district program. I, I know for the high school, I've heard a lot of talk from parents of incoming students. There's just a lack of communication between being a junior high athlete and translate, transferring to high school. So I feel like we're missing some recruitment options. I feel the athletic involvement of our current freshman class is really low. And I'd love for this person to dive into that. Why, why is it low? I think communication is a huge part of that. Do parents know when practices start? Do they know what forms are needed the first day of practice, when they have to have their physicals? As a, as a parent, I didn't know that. So I think having, making sure communicating, I think communication, it would be huge. And a coordinated communication effort, those are things that kind of jumped out for me. I'd love to know, I'd love as a board member to have a board update by this person, given that it's more of a district. I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with that.
Not that I disagree with it. I think that the stipend position and as a stipend position is paying low. I, I don't think he needs to come and report to us on, on his off time.
Yeah.
I agree that he, he could send us a memo. He could send us some suggestions or send it up the chain, give it to Jack Baldorman who gives it to Kevin.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I agree. The information's very important. I just, I don't want to make somebody on a stipend position come here on a Tuesday night and wait till we let him speak. So that's not, unless he wants to, that's fine, okay?
That's a great point, Gary.
I, I wouldn't, I mean, I do want that information. And I can tell you, there has been a lack of communication over the years with everything you said about parents and teachers and coaches. And that's one of the reasons that started this conversation several years ago, to try to improve that. And I don't know if we're still there yet, but I, I do think we should, in my opinion, I think we should move forward tonight with accepting this. And we can always have the committees continue to meet, continue to talk, to make improvements. But I, I think it's time to let this young man know that, you know, yes, we do want him in this position. Yes, we're accepting it. And I don't want to say move on. I want to say continue our talks to try to figure out a way to do it better. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just want to build on that too. I, I want to say I was on this committee. I agree with John. This is a little less time than we hoped for, for this position. Originally, the goal was full-time and then it went to point seven and now it's down to point five. So I think we need to be realistic that this is a step in the right direction, but it's not all the way to bright, like we probably will need to be to be competitive in the conference that we have agreed to join. And I think we all need to be realistic about that. I also, I guess my biggest concern is that we set the person in this position up for success. And I think the job description is, is big. There's a lot in there for a halftime stipend position. And so I, I guess, I think it will be important for whoever is working with him to help him prioritize what success looks like based on this job description. And that's not for us to get into the weeds on, but that's, I'm just going to say that publicly, that I think in order for us to continue to make a case for more time to be invested and more dollars to be invested, we're going to have to prove success in this first year. And I, I am concerned about that for him upfront because this is a very big job description. That said, I do think it's time for us to, to make a decision and, and move and give him some clarity or give the person in this position some clarity about what his role is going to be. And, you know, from there, I, I also agree that continuing to have the committee meet and discuss this and evaluate how we're doing realistically and what we realistically might be able to do in the future is really important.
So I have a couple of questions. So I asked Kevin to add this job description. Dana and I had a conversation. Can I ask, do we envision that this is the job description for this particular person now? Or are we looking at this job description to be a job description for a full-time athletic director? Do you know what I'm asking?
Right, right. And actually, that is the pared down version. So, so yes, that, you know, it is definitely, you know, but that was pared down for this position.
Okay, that's, that's, that was part of the reason why I wanted to ask that. So one of the, the thing that I noticed was the communication piece. And I think it would be, I don't know where this falls to because obviously communication is something we've talked about for a long time. I was really surprised to see all over Facebook that there's a parent meeting tomorrow night for sports. Again, I didn't see it anywhere on the website. I've never heard, in all the years I've been in the district, of having a parent athletic meeting before the school year starts. Now, you know, my son's involved in, in golf. So the coach said, you know, well, can we meet on Tuesday night? And if someone can't, whatever. So there was a, it was a very nice meeting. So there's a couple of things, like I found, I think they do, from, from what I've seen, that they do a good job when the eighth graders come over to talk about what are the things available for students. But then it, nothing happens. So kids get this information, maybe they want to do basketball, maybe they want to do soccer, maybe they want to do. And I think there's a handout that says, it happens here, it happens here, it happens here. But what's interesting is, and since I have been doing this for a while, I knew that, I knew that golf starts early. I mean, they've been kind of, I, I don't know that we're giving that full information. So if we're already having a meeting with parents or if, if, I mean, do you know if this meeting is happening? And is it, is it a school, is it being run by the school? Do you know? Because it's not on the website.
It's, it is being ran by the, by the school.
And I have never seen it happen before school started, so. And I haven't seen any emails coming out to anybody. I only saw it on Facebook. Because we've got some, you know, the, the boosters have been putting it out there. So I'm suggesting maybe that since nothing went out to parents, that maybe, I don't know, if they want to have one or not have one or have two or something along those lines. Because what if you've got kids that haven't even signed up? You know what I mean? Any of the information that they give out, like these things about that. And the other thing is, and this came up again the other night, and I know that, and I will admit this, I have been doing this parenting thing for a while. And last year I kept getting, you didn't register your student, you didn't register your student. I said, I did. I gave you all the forms. I gave you, well, there's, there's a separate thing called eight to 18 that no one ever really explains what that is. So the, these are pieces of why we need to have somebody.
Sure.
But these are things that have been happening for a long time anyway. And now that, in particular, this parent meeting, like I don't know how that, you know, I guess I'm just saying that out loud. I don't know where it came from. I don't know how it's coming. And what if we have kids that haven't even, like what if they're on vacation? So I guess, you know, again, with the communication, we've talked about communicating to our families. And this was, you know, so I am, been at this a long time. I didn't even know what this eight to 18 thing was. And it's like, it's a separate thing you have to go and do. So again, we currently have, correct, at the high school and junior high, we have assistant athletic directors, right? So in place right now, while we talk, there are assistant athletic directors and we have a halftime athletic director. Can we at least do, do something to make sure that there's communication with parents? Because what tends to happen is the coaches, like they'll do something like tell the kids, you know, like, hey, here's the practice schedule. And then maybe things change. And, and part of the conversation we had today is like, when you're a junior and senior and maybe you're driving, it's a completely different ball game than if you're a freshman or junior, freshman or sophomore. So it's, it, yes, this is absolutely, but some of these basic things, like when do you sign up? Where do you sign up? I think we should probably address that sooner rather than later.
Sure.
And I don't know about this Thursday night meeting. So frankly, I kept seeing it and I didn't know what it was.
And so I guess to the, to the point here, Kevin, in looking at the job description, I guess I'm not seeing communication with, I mean, there's definitely communication baked in here.
Right.
Yeah.
But I don't see that as a top priority for the athletic director position. And I guess the question is, was the plan to have that be handled separately by another position that you might be recommending at some point? Or is the plan really to have that be baked in here?
Yeah, well, that should be baked in. I mean, that should be, yeah, like, should come out afterwards, that communication.
Well, and I think parent meetings are fantastic.
Yes.
And, and I know, I'm thrilled that we're having a parent meeting on Thursday. Don't get me wrong. I just, I just want to make sure that we're communicating all the wonderful things we are doing.
Right.
And I'm really excited. I know the person that's going to serve in this role is going to do an amazing job. He, we're very lucky to have him. It's going to be interesting to see how he takes this with the limited time that he has. But I agree with, with all three of my board members across the room here that it is a stipend position and I should be moderating my expectations. I know he's excited about it and we're excited to have more of a focus on athletics. But I think it's good to have reasonable expectations for this position. I agree that we should move forward tonight with a vote.
So a couple of things. So are we all in favor of having a vote?
Yes.
Okay, do, in terms of any more conversation, can we do something about what's happening right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think right now there's, I don't know what's happening. And if there is, we need to get an email list out ASAP or whatever, something. So that's all I had.
I want to set an expectation because we, we're going to vote on something and approve 604 and a half hours for an entire school year. Actually, for 12 months, let's be honest. Because knowing what this individual, this individual's level, level of dedication, it's not going to stop on June 6th, right? We know this. And so we're going to ask someone to do a boatload, put a boatload of hours in. And we're going to expect them to do, do it in 604 and a half hours for the whole year. And I just want to make that very abundantly clear as we head towards a vote, that this is, this job district description we have here and all the things that we're sitting around adding to it right now are completely unrealistic for someone to spend 604 and a half hours in an entire year for our district in support of K through 12. He's, he's going to be one of, how many people in our district support K through 12? He's going to be one of very few people in this district that support K through 12, anything. And we're asking him to do it for 5,800 bucks. And I'm sorry, I find this, I, I find that, that, the idea of that completely unreasonable. If we're going to vote on it, let's vote on it.
Well, the only thing I want to add to that is that we have not gotten rid of the assistant athletic directors. So there's still, I mean, other people that-
What's their release time?
They don't, uh-
They don't have release time?
And is it just at the junior high that there's an athletic director?
There's one at the high school.
One at the high school.
There's one at the high school, too.
Right. And I imagine like any other position, that this, well, correct, tell me if this is correct. Since this person is going to remain housed at the high school, that person would still fall under the principal's job. I mean, he, he, the principal would be supporting this person, right? So if something came along that, that would need some kind of, like, like even this whole thing about this meeting, like that should have been something that was already being done. You know what I mean? So like somewhere, somebody made a decision to change it. So I don't know where that, that came from. So, so there, there still are, there still are resources.
Right, right.
And hopefully we can get to a point where we can continue having that discussion. Okay, that's all I had. Does anybody want to look at what the action item is? And are we, let's just say, quote-quote, comfortable with what the action item says? If we are-
Well, we can't change the action item and then vote on it, can we?
We can amend it. We've done, we've done amending of things. I'm just saying because of, in the, right now, in, in the position, oh, that's under administrative contact, okay. I mean, we've had a conversation here about what we're going to do. We're going to continue to look at the position. We're still going, we're going to continue to look at athletics. I just want to, before I read it.
I don't, I don't have any problem with the way it's worded. I'm reading my objection now.
Okay, any other, before we do that, does anybody have any other comments on that? All right, then we will move to our action item. The chair will entertain a motion to appoint Dan McCullough as athletic director for Community Unit School District 201 as presented.
So moved. Second?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Mrs. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Price, Mr. Rudy?
As it's presented, no.
Mrs. Sturmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Charlton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Motion carried. Okay, superintendent's report.
Under my report, first is the, to remind our school families that Wednesday, August 21st, is the first day for student attendance. And if a family is not registered for their 2019, 2020 school year, please contact your child's school to make sure you get that done. I'm sure all the students are happy to hear that. Let's go resuming.
done. I'm sure all the students are happy to hear that school is resuming. And then, our staff, though, actually report on August 19th to officially open the school year. We'll have our traditional breakfast and welcome and introduce our new staff. And throughout the August 19th and 20th, our staff will be involved in several different staff development activities and school improvement, including training in I-Ready, which the board discussed at the end of the school year. And then, the ODA Student Management, which will allow our teachers to be able to progress, progress monitor, and then be able to adjust their, their instruction throughout the year.
Okay. Well, that's all I, we don't have anything else under any of the other things. Are there any board reports?
Just good luck to everybody. Let's have a great school year. 2019, 20, a great one.
Mm-hmm. I just want to comment, I was at the registration again this year, and I would like to say that, whereas, because of the requirement of residency, I found this to be very smooth. I, I, I thought it went very, very well. And everybody that was there, I thought, and I, I think it's amazing, and I like it very much, that all, that a lot of the administrators are sitting right there. The, all the building principals and assistant principals were sitting right there at the desk for residency. And I found that to be spectacular. All of the staff, everybody was there in, in full. It's a lot of things happening, a lot of things happening. But I just want to say that I thought it went, it went very, very well. And I thought that was excellent. And I, and one of the things that I did was, as I was seeing these new families, it was really nice to be able to take a family and say, here, let me introduce you to the principal. And there were a number of little kids that I thought that was spectacular, that they got to meet their principal right away. And same thing with the high school. So, I just want to say that I thought it went very well. And kudos to everybody involved in that. So, okay, any other board reports? And then, are there any public comments? No? Future meetings and events, Junior High School Ice Cream Social, August 14th at 6 o'clock at the Westmont Junior High School. Manning New Family Orientation, August 16th at 5 o'clock. Manning Ice Cream Social, August 16th at 6 o'clock at Manning. Is there, do we have something for Miller?
Yeah, sorry. We were just saying, there's, there is a Miller-
What do we have?
There's a Miller Back-to-School Barbecue on August 19th at 5:30, from 5:30 to 8:00 PM at Ty Warner Park.
And the supply drop-off and meet the teacher is right before that, at 2:30 to 3:30, I believe.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you for looking that up. Okay. Looking at these, I know the high school has something, but it's after our next board meeting. So, that's fine. Okay, then, drum roll, first day of student attendance, August 21st, 2019. And that is, that's a PLC day.
Yes.
And that is a PLC day. And then, the next school board meeting will be August 27th. That will begin at 6 o'clock, and it's at the Westmont Village Hall. Okay, we do not have to go in close. We have finished that. So, then, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Our next meeting is going to be answered.
We're doing the same thing.